Good evening and welcome to the Lawrence City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 21st, 2020. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counselor Estel Reyes. Noted. Counselor Levy. Counselor Anna Levy. Noted. Counselor Selena Reyes.
Counselor Selena Reyes.
Present.
Counselor Abdu.
Present.
Counselor Peano.
Present.
Counselor De La Cruz.
Present.
Counselor Giovanni Rodriguez. Counselor Giovanni Rodriguez. Counselor President, I have no visuals, so if he's here, I can't see anybody.
No, he's not.
Thank you. Counselor Vice President La Plant.
Present.
And Counselor President Vasquez.
Uh, present. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
You're welcome.
Pursuant to the Governor's Baker's Order of March 12th, 2020, and order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strictly mutations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public meeting of the Lawrence City Council for the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts is being conducted via remote participation. Non-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted, but the public can listen and review this meeting while in progress by the use of Facebook and YouTube web access sites, which are referenced below in the agenda. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will also be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of hearings designated for public comments by the use of web or phone in the Zoom application. The link has been provided on the agenda. Meeting ID 94273063174 with the password letter C, letter C, numbers 72120 when using the Zoom application. If typing by phone, 6465588656. Meeting ID 94273063174 with the password 4766841. Counselors, please note that Counselor Estela Reyes asked to be excused. She continues to be ill with the COVID-19 virus, so I ask that we will keep her. In your thoughts and prayers, at a speed of recovery. Can you please join me for a moment of silence?
Thank you. Now please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Counselors, I apologize. I did not realize my video was not turned on. I apologize about that. Moving on, minutes for the council to approve. There's none, public participation. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak?
Omar Yun Malik, 53 Chester Street.
Name and address for the record, please.
Omar Yun Malik, 53 Chester Street.
Go ahead, Mr. Malik.
Good evening, honorable members. In this critical time in the history of human being, we are united to say that we can breathe with our best police department. We are united behind the best example of sacrifice and bravery. We are united to support our police officers and their union. Our police department with impeccable leadership by Honorable Chief Roy Vasquez has done excellent job. We support them. One city to support Lawrence Public School and their union, police officers are our family. We support their union. Our city in the worst era of the global pandemic is a better city because of our hard-working DPW workers. Lawrence is a better city with the man of you and Mayor Rivera support our DPW workers and their leadership. Our public school with impeccable leadership by Honorable Superintendent Cynthia Paris, one of the best superintendents in the history of Lawrence. In this worst era of the global pandemic, continue education of our children. Our city, the city of immigrant, we are proud to support our police officers and their union. Our city will overcome this worst time in the history of our city under God with the best support of our police officers, our firefighters, our teachers' union. Lawrence always strong. Lawrence always unite. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malik. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard?
Good evening, counselors. My name's Dick Russell.
Name and address for the record, please.
Okay, my name is Dick Russell. I reside as an unhappy camper at 34 Cross Street. First, why is the mayor been sitting on the coronavirus numbers since July 18th? We listened to him rant and rave about wearing a mask and washing our hands, so shouldn't we be able to see how effective that is? Or is he following the lead of cities like Chelsea and Brockton and not allowing the posting of the daily numbers of cases of coronaviruses in their cities? Four of you that are on the council are supposed to be representing the best interests of every one of the citizens of Lawrence. While play arsonist, light a fire under the mayor to get those numbers posted. We, the citizens of Lawrence, deserve to know the truth. Second, is the resolution to make June 19th a city observed holiday also going to make it a paid day off? If so, is it in their contracts? Just asking for a taxpayer, me. In closing, I would like to wish an unnamed city council who is not present a very happy birthday. As always, I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard? Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak?
I guess I would say something.
Name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Kelly Stanisowski, 47 Hamlet Street.
Go ahead, Kelly.
I would just like to know, with the city council meetings and the public meetings, what phase you guys will fall under? That was my question, because I feel like if, you know, people can work in the food markets, they can go shopping. You know, I'm just wondering when in city council will start holding meetings. I know a lot of other city counselors in different cities will hold meetings outside. And I feel like if my children can go through yearly fire drills, lockdowns to prepare for the worst, I would think and hope that my city council and the city government would have been prepared as well and that you guys should have been in the Phase 1. So I'm looking for, you know, the meetings to come back together somehow, somewhere. Not that.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments, Kelly. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? There's none. Public participation is now closed. Moving on to public hearings, there's none. We have communications from the mayor, city officials, and the city attorney. And we have document 15320, which is a fiscal year 2019 city audit. It was based on the agenda by Mr. Mark Ianello, who's our chief administrative and finance officer. I believe Mr. Ianello logged in using his phone. Mr. Ianello?
I am here, counselor.
Go ahead.
Well, this is just the, I just submitted the FY19 city audits for the council's review. This is usually referred to the Budget and Finance Committee, where we have one of the partners from Powers and Sullivan review the FY19 audit results with the Budget Finance Committee, and then we come back to the city council later date and review it with the full city council.
Yeah. This document is going on to the Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on, we have document 13820. It's a resolution designation of June 19th, as 19th annually as a city observed holiday. This is going down to the ordinance committee. We have appropriations orders, requests and petitions, new filings. It's document 14220. It's an appropriation transfer from the Fire Department from Columbia Gas Reserve Account on the amount of $555,810 to new pump truck. An appropriation transfer for Columbia Gas Reserve Account on the amount of $60,000 to repair of existing truck. It's going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document 14520 is a mending loan order for North Common Educational Complex Elevated Repair on the amount of $4,500,000. It's going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document 14620 is a patrolman's union collective bargaining agreement funding approval for $3 million. It's going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document 14720, SEIU Local 3 Laborers Union Collective Bargaining Agreement Funding Approval of $70,000 is going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document 14820, SEIU Local 3 Clerical Union Collective Bargaining Agreement Funding Approved for the Amount of $60,000. It's down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document 14620, Mr. Vice President and Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Council President. This document was an appropriation. Nope, this is a request for an authorization to extend the Greater Lawrence Summer Programs Grant for $5,000. Just send up to the full council with favorable recommendation. Make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made.
Second?
It's been second by Counselor Selena Reyes. Is there any further discussion?
Counselor President, I know that we have the library director with us. She may want, just to give a couple of highlights of this, if she's willing to, that might be a good opportunity. Director Valentin, welcome. If you have just a couple of highlights about this, if you may want to share with the rest of the council.
Sure, Counselor. I'll be brief with it. Thank you very much. So these monies from SS County Community Foundation will fund this year's summer programs and in partnership with the center, which also receives similar funding. So we joined, we did some joint efforts, excuse me, and that's my child. We did a joint effort this year where we would keep people safe and social distancing and really utilize like our parks, Elcat, for some virtual programming, our social media and so forth. If you visit and please visit many of our parks, you will find lawn signs there, which will basically say things like, you know, "Where am I now?" And you could take a photo where you are to do like some fun social media things. There'll be a scavenger hat associated with one of the lawn signs. We're going to be installing a story walk as well in both the north and south commons. Where you will find an enlarged book in each park, so people can literally walk along with their family and read a book. So I'll just end there right there. There's really a lot to look forward to. Follow our social media pages and also go to Elcat to find a lot of these programs. And we have contributions from several organizations in the community, Groundwork Lawrence, Beyond Soccer. So we're really glad to make this a community-wide effort.
Thank you, Counselor Villas Novas. I have no more questions.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Counselor Peano.
Uh, thank you, Council President. So all I'll say is that I'm going to have to abstain from this vote since I was part of the organization that gave out the grant. So I just want to make clear why I'm abstaining.
Is there anyone else? Seeing there's none. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counselor Estel Reyes, noted. Counselor Anna Levy, noted. Counselor Selena Reyes.
Hey, Anna Levy, present. I'm here.
Oh, Counselor Levy, thank you. Your vote, please.
Okay, yes.
Noted. Counselor Reyes, Selena Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor Abdu.
Yes.
Counselor Peano.
Abstain.
Noted. Counselor De La Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counselor Vice President La Plant.
Yes.
And Counselor President Vasquez.
Yes, the motion carries. Moving on, we have document 12720, Mr. Vice President and Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee.
Thanks so much, Council President. This is a document that requests the authorization to expend funds. This is an allocation of the supplemental Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, or in other words, under the CARES Act, grant funds. This is for the sum of $1,138,406, and it was sent up to the full council with favorable recommendation and to make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and it has been properly seconded in the discussion. Seeing there's Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes, I would like to extend that opportunity to Vima Martinez to explain what is this, what this is and what this will mean to the city of Lawrence and to the different sections that this money is going to impact.
Director Martinez Dominguez.
Yes, good evening, Counselor. This is the second emergency solutions grant COVID funding that the city received. The initial one went before you in May. And these funds are typically to assist people who are homeless or to do homelessness prevention work. The first allocation came from the federal government. It was $526,348. This second funding allocation came using a different kind of a formula that took into account the total homeless population, the unsheltered homeless population, total very low-income renters, which are those who are 50% of the area median income or those who are living in overcrowded housing. It also wants us to look at those who are most vulnerable. These funds could be used for rapid rehousing or it could be used for homelessness prevention, which is basically rental assistance and stabilization services. We are using this second allocation of funding to do just that, just do the homelessness prevention. We really have taken into consideration everything that is going on. I've been part of a group that is called Financial and Housing Stability Working Group, and it really has a lot of the providers from the area. And we have been following actually the number of calls that they are receiving. And even in my office for rental assistance, people who are unemployed or people who lost their benefits, people who lost their jobs, who have not been able to pay the rent since the emergency started. So these funds can only be paid for COVID to respond to the COVID, the impact of COVID on people and families who are very low income. And so I do know, I recall that Counselor Rodriguez had asked, "What was the, do we have any data around how many families are in need of assistance?" I can tell you this much. Since I've been part of this group and I did some homework afterwards, there have been anywhere between 400 and 500 families who have already reached out to our partners who work in the community and even my office. I mean, I had at least 35 calls a week and a half ago, about a week ago. And so we are seeing this as a major need. The state is also foreseeing, was also foreseeing about 20,000 evictions once the moratorium was lifted. And part of this group, we all advocated so that the governor can support an extension in the moratorium to allow all of this new funding and programming to be in place and for us to do what we need to do to get our house in order, in order to get this funding out. And that happened yesterday, so I'm really happy about that. So that's how these funds are going to be used. We estimate, based on the cost of rent, we're looking at probably paying up to six months of rent just to extend these funds a little more, understanding that there are other pots of money that we have wrapped, rental assistance for families in transition that the government are increasing for. And now, most recently, the IRMA, which is Emergency Rental and Mortgage Assistance, which is aimed at those people who are at a higher incomes scale. So this is basically what we're trying to do, provide housing supports and stabilization services, including hopefully financial literacy to the families who may be at risk of losing their homes.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Vilma, if anybody in the community would like to take advantage of this opportunity, where should they go and who should they call? Can you provide that information for the public?
Sure. So just to start off, we have not received our grant agreements yet. We are still waiting for that. Until the grant agreements are received and signed by all parties and a contract is executed, we cannot extend this. So we're looking at probably either August or September to get this program up and running. We're also looking at different alternatives of how to implement this funding. Do we do it as a city? Understanding that there's a lot of challenges that we may face, particularly with the procurement laws and, you know, paying rent for people for up to six months may bring us right over that $10,000 mark. So we're looking at different options and how to partner with different organizations to get these funds out the door. One of the major things that you're required to do is be part of the HM, it's called HMIS system. It's basically a homeless management program that the federal government requires you to use, both to do the intake, the screening, log, all the case management that you're doing and all the referrals that you make. So that's another step that we have to get through. So I'm, right now, what I did is for the many families that reached out to our office is provide information. We're working really closely with Community Action Council and CTI, who are the ones who receive the raft and the IRMA funding, and asking people to check back with us in September. So we're hoping that to get this program up and running anywhere between August and September, and we still do not have a grant agreement.
Okay. So once the grant agreement, it's been signed, how people might be able to get an advantage of this?
Once we understand what, who's going to be the entity that's going to manage this program, then we'll provide a fact sheet. We plan, we need to do, create a criteria, a process for people to come and receive the assistance. There's going to be marketing around it as well, so.
So previously, when we received the first amount, the first amount of money, the first fund of $500, something dollars, how you guys proceed to manage that fund back then?
We still don't have a grant agreement for that. We don't have a grant agreement for the CDVG COVID money that we received or the ESG COVID 1 or 2. In order for us to use those funds, we needed to do a substantial amendment to the annual action plan, meaning that this last fiscal year that just ended, whatever we proposed to do for the action plan year, we needed to amend it and submit it to HUD. All that process, and then HUD needs to review it and make any changes before they can even release the grant agreement. So there's a lot of steps to getting access to these funds. That amendment has been done. It was posted accordingly for five days on our website. I would put it in, you know, legal notices and submit all the responses in early July, just because there were certain things that we didn't know how the funds were going to be spent. You have to be very sure how the funds will be spent. And if you recall, another uses for another ESG, but actually the CDVG was to target the 25% that FEMA will not reimburse for the shelters. And afterwards, this has been a moving target. Afterwards, we learned that we can use other sources of money. And so CDVG now is going to go to small businesses. So it's been a moving target just because information has been released as we go. And we had to make sure that we know exactly how the funds are going to be used so that we can tell the public, so the public has accurate information. And so then HUD, you have to upload the information, and that's how those funds need to be used.
Essentially, once those two agreements are signed, so the city will have about $1.5 million or more available funds for doing a small business and rent assistance.
You're correct. For rental assistance or housing, you know, homelessness prevention, what it's called actually, we're looking at in total $1,664,754 between number one, ESG COVID 1 and ESG COVID 2. Some of those funds are going, 10% goes to administration. Some of it went to emergency shelter assistance. And what we have left over for rapid rehousing and prevention, it's rapid rehousing, 461,439, which is basically first, last, and deposit. And any utility urges, we still have to figure that out. And then prevention, which is basically rental assistance to prevent any housing, loss of housing. It's $1,024,565.
Do you mind sending us the breakdown of those funds to the city council?
I actually, Counselor Rodriguez, in the last, the budget and finance hearing, you asked me for that information, and I emailed it to the council, the Budget and Finance Committee, the day after.
And that was both together or just this one?
I believe, I'm going to go back, but I believe it was everything that you asked me to send on CDVG and ESG.
If I can help just a bit, because I think that the more, the more, you know, I think one of the things that you were asking about was how, what do we do with that first grant? What are we going to do with the second grant? Counsel Rodriguez, I think that's a really good question. And the first grant was for the, for those shelters that we did, emergency shelters that we had to do because we were afraid that homeless people were going to spread the virus or they were going to live in the conditions that they couldn't allow for enough spread. And so the shelter that was set up in Andover, the shelter that was set up in Methuen, those were ones that we did because we didn't want to set up a bigger shelter right next to the public housing project or right across the street from two of the biggest elderly complexes we have in the city. So that first wave, that first care grant that you guys voted for, went to subsidize those efforts. And the second one is like what Vilma said. We're going to try to, we're going to do homelessness prevention, which is first and last rent and also if people are behind in their rent. So that's, I think this next wave is going to happen. The fact that we don't have a signed agreement and those things didn't let us stop from us to do the work, but that's, I think that the paperwork will catch up with the work that they're doing. And I would tell you, Vilma and her staff did a great job. They housed, you know, together, you know, I got to think, over 80 people, you know, that were otherwise going to be on the street with COVID or in risk to get COVID in that first wave of that money. Now, this next wave is going to come just as the $600 on the unemployment money is going to run out. So we're going to see more people going to need that assistance. So I think it's going to be timely, even though it's going to be probably September, August or September, when you see the money coming in. Thank you for your patience.
Yes, just to clarify something. The first round of money, there was, it was going to be, I mean, I'm a little confused. It was going to be used for the 25% of the amount of money that HUD didn't cover as a reimbursement, right? But and then we figured it out that, oh, they figured out a way to pay for that 25%, am I correct? It was the amount of money that wasn't covered under the, under the other funds that...
No, I think the 25%, the FEMA would reimburse us for these things came out after we had already marched down the path of doing the emergency shelters. And so we're going to use that money in a way, again, all this COVID money in a way that's going to impact the least amount of money from the general fund. So as much money that we can get from the federal government to subsidize all the work that we're doing, I think that's what's going to make us ensure that we can get the most impact across many families. So the timeline is a little bit weird because we had said we're going to use this money specifically to go after those emergency shelter people. But in the end, that first wave will take care of that. And the second wave, we're going to take care of our families, making sure they have enough rent and making sure they don't get evicted.
All right. Vilma, Director Martinez, do you mind looking at that email to see if the breakdown that you sent us was everything included there or just the second round?
I will. I will do that from home, and I will forward it to you. All right, yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. President.
Councilor de la Cruz, is that you raising your hand?
Yes, please.
Go ahead, Councilor de la Cruz.
I have a question for Ms. Martinez. As you know, we have a lot of homeless kids that are living in shelters. And if, you know, right now, they might have to go get ready to go to school if the school gets reopened. And they are living in shelters. Will this kind of family have preference with this money that is coming to the city?
So that's a great question, because one of the things that we're looking at is how do we develop a criteria that's going to help the most vulnerable people, considering that the funds are very limited, and considering also that there are other parts of funding that families could access. So at this point, I want to say that any family that is facing eviction, any youth who are homeless, that are adult youth, actually, youth homelessness is something that we're seeing an increase in, particularly those who are aging out of the system. Definitely, anyone above the age of 18, that's in part of the system, yes. Even the families that we have had at the shelter, the temporary shelter, if we would have had these funds available, COVID funds available, would have been nice to complement what we're doing with the state as far as housing subsidies. So yes, we still have to develop a criteria, but children who are aging out of the system are among those who are the indicators or predictors for homelessness. So definitely groups that we need to look at.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Saying there's no further questions or comments, Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Council Vice President LaPlante?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council de la Cruz?
Yes.
Council Peano?
Yes.
Council Abdou?
Yes.
Council Selena Reyes? Council Levy?
Yes.
Council Estel Reyes, noted, and Council President Vasquez?
Yes, the motion carries. Moving on, we have, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Vice President Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee?
Thank you once again, Council President. This document is a proposed five-year financial forecast and user guides and assumptions between fiscal year 2021 and fiscal year 2025. This was sent to the full council without a recommendation as a committee report, and to make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, it was seconded by Councilor Reyes. Saying there's no discussion.
Item 128, sorry?
Yes, item 12820.
Just the forecast?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Council Estel Reyes noted, Council Anna Levy?
Yes.
Council Selena Reyes? Council Abdou?
Yes.
Council Peano?
Yes.
Council de la Cruz?
Yes.
Council Giovanni Rodriguez?
Present.
Noted. Council Vice President LaPlante?
Yes.
And Council President Vasquez?
Yes, the motion carries. Moving on, we have document 29B20. Mr. Vice President Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee?
Thank you once again, Council President. This document was split up in the committee into 129A and 129B. 129B has been sent up to the full council with a favorable recommendation, and that is a transfer from the stabilization fund of $300,000 for police training, and to make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made. It has been taken by Councilor de la Cruz. Discussion? Council Rodriguez?
Yes, I just want to clarify a few changes that we made at the Budget and Finance Committee and
Council Abdou is muted. I think he seconded this.
Yes?
You may continue, Councilor Rodriguez.
Thank you so much. I just want to clarify a few things that we, a few changes that we did at the Budget and Finance Committee, which the most important was, the most important one was that we put a restriction on this fund not to pass the two years. And that way, we ensure that the police department have to use these funds for training within the two-year period until fiscal year 2020. So you just want to clarify that that's up there as well.
Council Vice President LaPlante?
Thank you very much. The counselor is correct. That was amended at the subcommittee, and the amendment is that these funds must be expended by June 30, 2021, so before the end of this fiscal year. So that's part of the, it's part of the motion.
It's two years.
I've got it down as 2021.
The amendment was until two years, two fiscal years, during 2021, first, 2021 and 2022. Am I correct, Council Peano?
Yes, so Mr. Chair or Mr. Vice President, so the conversation that we were having at the Budget Committee is to ensure that those funds would be available for a two-year period.
Yes, Mr. President, they recommend, well, essentially, this fund was presented to us on a multiple-year training program, which was including more than two years, and which means that the police department was going to have a reduction on the for training for, if we spend it in three years, it was going to be less than what we spent last year, which was 120,000. So that's why we actually put it into two years, and that we were sure that they have more than what they have last year, which was 120,000 last year, and this year would be, it means 150,000. So it was an increment.
So I, that's not my recollection, but we certainly can make that part of it at this level. And I just, I just want to make sure that we've got members of the police department available. I just want to make sure through you, Mr. President, that the 2022 is what was agreed upon, not 2021, if I can, through you, if I can get someone to speak on that.
Please, sir.
I have a question, President.
I've got a question, maybe to Councilor Brunel, if she's on the line.
The chief is also on the line.
Okay.
It's Vasquez or? Former Councilor Brunel?
I'm happy to try to answer that. I think the chief is on the line as well. But my recollection of that meeting was that it was for two years and that it was through June of 2022. And I believe the chief had an extensive conversation with Councilors Rodriguez and Peano, and they did agree to that. The two-year caveat, which was to June of 2022.
Very good. I stand corrected, Council President. The amendment then will be for the extension of the expenditures of fund through June 30 of 2022.
I mean, it's up there on the, on the notes.
And it's cut off.
Sound assumption was 2021 or 2022. It was 2022.
We're good. We're making the motion for 2022. I don't think that's under debate at this point, Council President, so 2022.
Councilor de la Cruz?
Yes, my question is, what about if they need to use the money between June 30 to June 21? Then they won't be able to use the money? Or they have to use it on the year 22? Mr. LaPlante, can you answer my question?
Yeah, it appears that there is a deadline by the expenditures. The committee wanted to make sure that this money did not languish, but was rather spent within a reasonable amount of time, a certain time. And they put a sunset clause on when that money can be spent, a two-year sunset clause. And so that's my understanding of what happened at the committee. Of course, we have some technical problems during that meeting, if you can recall, counselors. But that's, the money, the police department can speak for itself, but they didn't think there was going to be any problem at all to be able to make sure these planning, these programs were going to be implemented and funded within that timeframe.
But my question is, if they need to use the money before the 2022, are they allowed to use the money? I need somebody to respond that for me, please.
So, Mr. Vice President, I think what Council de la Cruz is asking is can the police department use the money before July 2022? And the answer is yes. They can.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, misunderstanding the question. Thank you, Council Peano.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, saying there's none, Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Council Vice President LaPlante?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council de la Cruz?
Yes.
Council Peano?
Yes.
Council Abdou?
Yes.
Council Reyes? Selena Reyes? Council Levy? Council Levy? Okay, I think she's muted.
Council Anna Levy?
Yes.
And Council Estel Reyes noted. And Council President?
Vote is yes, motion carries.
Council President?
Councilor LaPlante?
I would like, just because it kind of keeps with this theme, I like to take something out of old business. That's the other half of this document, 129B. This is for the youth empowerment, employment, and anti-violence for $300,000. It's currently in the subcommittee, and make a motion that we discharge it from the committee.
Motion has been made, and it's been properly seconded. Any discussion? Council Peano?
Thank you, Mr. President Vasquez. So I know that, so one of the questions that we had at the Budget Committee was that when it was presented to us, there was no documents, no supporting documents around the criteria or process on how these funds would be distributed. And one of the things that we essentially were speaking about was being unable to take a vote on allocating that amount of funds without having further understanding of maybe not precisely what organizations were going to be receiving the $300,000, but how organizations would be able to apply apply for these grants. I think, you know, I do remember a few days later, I spoke with the mayor and I had a brief conversation with him about what the thought frame was, and I think there was an intention on getting us those documents at this, at this meeting. I don't know if any of that has been provided before. So I wanted to ask before I would take a vote if we have that information or someone that can provide us that information before we take a vote.
I'd be glad to talk to that if you want.
Mayor, the Council President has stepped out and has asked me to take the chair. So Mayor Rivera, please answer the question if you don't mind.
Yeah, so I, I think that we're all kind of trying to catch up bearings in the middle of the, what is has to be one of our most, you know, well-focused talks and conversations about race and about police and how we police our communities. And, you know, my intention in getting this document down to you was to do two things. One is to supply, to continue to supply training to our police officers, but also to find some money to put towards empowering our youth to have a better dialogue, to increase the dialogue and to continue the dialogue between police and the youth in our community. Because most of the protests have been organized by real thoughtful and, you know, organized and kids from our community that I wanted to figure out a way to get funds into their hands to do the best they can. So I used as a shorthand that we would use the Community Development Block Grant Process. There's an application for that, and there's a committee all set up for that, and that we would infuse some conversations with the people who are youth-serving organizations. And so I did that, it kind of as a, to do it, to get the money fast and get it on the street fast so they could use it this summer. We wanted to use free cash. We cannot use free cash because free classes closed from being used. So now, if we wanted to use it, we have to actually take it from a different account. And so the speed in which we did it was to deal with that matter and try to get it. I think, again, we would lean on the Community Development Block Grant Process, which is there's an application, it's thoughtful, it's got, you know, a Community Development Block Grant Committee that oversees these things. I believe Representative Moran is on it. I believe Representative Devers is on it. Folks from the community are on it, but also we would inject the voice of the the youth-serving organizations. It was fast because we were trying to get the free cash money before it went out of this. It is no longer there, and I do owe Council Peano the documents. We did not get that to you, and I do apologize. So we still are going to continue to use the Community Development Block Grant Process. Again, we will, we will use the, there's an organization of nonprofits that have been working through the COVID 19 crisis, and they have a standing youth-serving committee. And I was going to bring that conversation to them and try to get some of their input into it. That's the best I have for now, but I totally understand that we don't have the documents in front of you tonight. And I do apologize for that.
You can be on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So I would like to, you know, hearing what the process is. I don't necessarily, I think we're familiar with what the community block grant process is, but I would just like to make, make an amendment that this money, essentially, you know, putting into words or writing down what Mayor Rivera just said, so that this money would be used using the Community Block Grant Process, and it would be open to all nonprofit organizations that serve Lawrence youth.
Right now, we're currently looking to discharge this out of the committee. Certainly, this would be germane if we were to get a motion, a favorable motion if it's properly discharged. So you may want to hold on to that if we get a discharge vote. Is there any of the councils who wish to speak on the motion to discharge? There will be. If it is discharged, we will have a discussion regarding the merits of the proposal. Any other councils which should speak on the discharge proposal? Mr. Del, Ms. de la Cruz, you wish to speak?
Thank you, Vice Chair. My worries about this is that usually organizations that already have youth groups are the one getting the benefit of this kind of grants. I think we have so many other organizations, even in churches, that they need the money to be able to help youth. Then I hope this time the community be more inclusive of people who are not already getting grants from the CDVG and all of those other grants that we have in the community. Then I understand that they are, that they are organized. But at the same time, it's always the same people getting and getting and getting and getting. And we still have other organizations that are doing the same amount of work. And, you know, they have youth kids in their program. Then I hope that we can think about other organizations that can benefit of this kind of grants that you major are proposing for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. de la Cruz. This is going to be a vote on discharging out of the committee. If there is a vote to discharge, which needs six votes according to Rule 11, then we can have a motion, and then these other details can be fleshed out in that motion. So motion has been made, and it has been properly seconded. There's no further discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council Estel Reyes is Counsel Estel Reyes is noted as absent. Counsel Anna Levy.
Present.
Marked present. Counsel Selena Reyes. Counsel Selena Reyes.
No.
Noted. Counsel Abdu.
Yes.
Counsel Peano.
Yes.
Counsel Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez. Counsel Giovanni Rodriguez.
Counsel Rodriguez is on mute.
Oh, sorry. Present.
Noted. Counsel Vice President and Chair at this time, LaPlante.
Yes.
And Counsel President Vasquez is noted as absent.
No, yes, yeah, I'm back.
Present, I'm sorry. Thank you. Do you resume the chair?
I do.
Counsel President, you resume the chair, please.
Yes.
Noted. And the roll is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 in favor, 1 opposed, 2 present and 1 absent. Discharge fails.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
You're welcome, Counsel President.
Now, moving on, we're going back to the top of the agenda. It's document 1320. It's Personnel Committee. It's the Chair for Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, rather. On June 22nd, the Personnel Committee voted by unanimous vote to recommend a three-year extension as proposed for First City Attorney Tim Hooton. And I submit that to you in the form of a motion.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly seconded. Any discussion? Discussion, Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes. Well, I just want to hear from Tim and Raquel as of how the relationship between both the Department and any other departments so far have worked out. And to Tim, why do you choose to continue working for the city of Lawrence?
Well, yeah, I'll start off. Everyone can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll start off. So Tim has been working with me in the city since last June of 2019. And I will almost repeat everything that I said at the Personnel Committee. I mean, he really has come to us with so much experience. As you know, right before that, I was by myself in the office and I really needed somebody that could just take a caseload and go with it. And we did extensive interviews and we got handed Mr. Hooton. Attorney Hooton has significant litigation experience. He's done plenty of trials. He had done a lot of civil work before, but most importantly, he was not unfamiliar with the municipal process. He had been on the Board of Selectmen for Middleton. He understood, you know, things that are really very municipal specific, like the public records, open meeting law, things like that. And he has been a great asset for the office. Internally, he has really gotten along with everybody in the office. There's another attorney, Gina Lagarca, as well as our long-term administrative assistant, Susan Nagati. And from what I gather from them, I mean, he is meshed really well. He's very professional. He's very courteous. Anytime that I have, you know, our offices are really close together, but every time I've asked him to recharge the department heads or recharge other employees for certain instances, I can tell that he has that element of finesse where he is able to, you know, describe what's going on with the cases that he's handling and, you know, being able to be available and just answer the different employees' questions that they have. For me, I think it's been great because, like I said, I've, having handled the litigation before, I've really needed somebody that I could just pass all the cases off to. And I don't really worry about what he's doing or anything like that. I mean, he is very conscientious with how he handles the city's cases. So I'll say, I've said it at the Personnel Committee and I'm saying it here to everyone present is that I am wholeheartedly recommending Attorney Hooton for a renewal contract with the City Attorney's Office. And I presented to you a three-year renewal contract in the hopes that you will approve that contract for him.
All right, thank you, Ron. I would like to hear from Tim.
Thank you, Counsel Rodriguez. I think a year ago, somebody asked me why don't I take a year contract? And I think I said then I would do longer if you wanted me. But it's been a great year. I mean, most people don't realize how well City Hall works together. I mean, every department, I've worked with the Clerk's office, worked with the Mayor's office. I mean, I just think the people that work in City Hall just give it their all. I mean, it's a great place to work. My office itself is a great place to work. Raquel's a great boss. You know, we kind of, I'm glad I don't have her job because I see what she has to do. I'm glad that I just do the litigation and go to court. But no, I've really enjoyed the job for the past year. I really think it's, I've grown on it. It's exciting whether it, I mean, many people won't think that elections are exciting, but I think elections are exciting. I think a lot of the stuff we do is very interesting. And it's exactly what I thought it would be and it's a great place to work. I mean, I really enjoy it if you'd want to keep me on.
All right, thank you so much. Counsel President, I see here on the document one of the amendments was, that amendment was made to actually renew the contract now for two years, but for three.
I believe the contract always was three, but I could be wrong.
It is a three-year contract. I don't believe it was ever a two-year.
Okay. So, yes. Well, I have no more questions. Thank you, Tim, for serving the community. Ruano, thank you for actually taking into the department and getting the right people right next to you. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Are there any other further questions or comments? Counsel LaPlante. Counsel LaPlante and then Counsel Abdu.
All right, I guess I'll go. I just want to make a real quick comment. One of the big issues that I know that Mr. Hooton has been working on the last year has been the Museum Square Garage. Very intricate, very contentious. Let's remove four. A lot of, a lot of various sides of this argument and it's been very difficult to get to some sort of resolution. But I know he's been working hard on that issue. I know he's been going to court and trying to provide as best he can not only the mayor's input, but the nine city councilors and trying to find someplace that he can represent the city. And that's an effort that I know is not easy. And I have a lot of respect for the attorney for trying to hurt all the different facets and try to have a kind of a streamlined, citywide client, if you will, on this. And so I just want to thank him and acknowledge that there's a lot of work going on this. And we had a early meeting this evening with City Attorney Ruano. And she was mentioning how, what kind of work ethic and success at this level as far as the work product is concerned with that, with the Museum Square Garage. So I just wanted to take one moment to acknowledge and thank Mr. Hooton. Keep up the good work. We need you on this and this is an important matter. And it's, we just want to say one, I represent Museum Square Garage, of course, but I just want to thank you for your efforts. Thank you.
Counsel Abdu.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. I just want to echo Counsel Rodriguez's question of Mr. Hooton. I believe I may have asked him that when he was being interviewed a year ago and Counsel Rodriguez's question is just salient today. And I know from the committee that I can then echo Counsel LaPlante's comments. You know, a lot of good work has been done. And I'll just close by saying that I look forward enthusiastically voting for this. Mr. Hooton is often one of the people that's in the chamber to answer our questions. And it's appreciated. And I think his years of municipal and legal work is paying dividends to the city of Lawrence. And I look forward to voting for this motion as proposed for three years. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Abdu. Counsel Peano.
Thank you, Counsel President. I want to echo my colleagues' comments. Attorney Hooton has been a pleasure, you know, working with him for the last year. You know, extremely attentive to details and, you know, very quick responding to any concerns that we've had. And, you know, I think it's not an easy job being an attorney for the city. So I am grateful for your service and I'm glad that you're going to be staying with us. And as Counsel Abdu says, I will be voting enthusiastically in favor of this motion. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to? There's none. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
As to the motion to approve, Counsel Vice President LaPlante.
Yes.
Counsel Giovanni Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Dela Cruz.
Present.
Noted. Counsel Peano.
Yes.
Counsel Abdu.
Yes.
Counsel Selena Reyes. Counsel Selena Reyes. Noted. Counsel Levy. Counsel Anna Levy. Counsel President, I don't see that she's with us. I'll move on and come back around and mark that absent if she doesn't answer.
Can you come back on her in a minute?
Counsel Anna Levy is not logged in.
Can you come back on Anna Levy in a second?
Counsel President. Per your discretion.
So if they are not logged in, unfortunately, you know, they have to be.
President, I say yes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, please.
Also, I want to.
Yes, Counsel President.
Yes, please mark, I'm Counsel Reyes as a yes. Counsel Levy is currently not in the meeting. When she joins, she wishes to record her vote to do so, but.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, what is the vote?
Counsel Estel Reyes absent and Counsel President, your vote.
Yes.
That's a six vote in favor. One present and two absent.
Thank you, Counsel Rodriguez. Okay.
President Vasquez.
Attorney Hooton, congratulations. You've been reappointed.
Thank you so much and thank you to the whole council. Appreciate all the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Congratulations. President Vasquez, have a question.
Yes, Counsel Reyes.
I vote no in the bill in 129B for the 300 because I confuse, so I want to vote yes on that because I hear that Mr. Clair said no and I tried to say yes, but when I'm on mute, I want to say no or no, no on the voting.
Mr. Clerk.
Counsel President, that's actually on 129A in which Counsel Reyes voted no. The vote, as far as I understand, has been called and recorded. A motion for reconsider might be entertained if the chair sees fit. Coming from someone on the, on this winning side.
So someone on the winning side will be anyone who voted.
Yes.
Yes.
And that's the motion to discharge.
Motion to discharge. Is there anyone?
To discharge.
Is there anyone on the prevailing side that wishes to reconsider the motion? Counsel LaPlante.
I'm on the prevailing side. I voted yes. I make a motion to reconsider.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made on second for document 129A20. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Now, Counsel President, this one clear, this motion is to place the document in line for a motion to discharge. So this is just a motion to reconsider, correct?
It is. That is correct. Counsel LaPlante.
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Is that your motion only to reconsider?
Start off with reconsider out of the committee. That's right, to reconsider.
To reconsider and discharge?
Reconsider and discharge. Let's do it all. Yeah.
Want to do it both? Very good.
Second.
Okay, so the motion has been properly seconded. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Estel Reyes noted. Counsel Levy. Noted. Counsel Selena Reyes. Counsel Abdu. Counsel Abdu? I see you. Yep, I got you.
Yes.
Counsel Peano.
Yes.
Counsel Peano.
Yes.
Counsel Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Counsel Giovanni Rodriguez.
Present.
Noted. Counsel Vice President LaPlante.
Yes.
And Counsel President Vasquez.
Yes. What is the tally there, Mr. Clerk?
Six in favor.
Motion approves.
Motion passes.
Counsel President.
Counsel Vice President.
Question, quick question about the procedure.
So the right question. There was a vote to discharge, to reconsider.
To reconsider the vote.
Previously taken and discharge the document from committee. So now the document is on the council's agenda.
So, but before she, she, there is another vote that is needed before the reconsideration take place. So she need to vote yes now to reconsider that vote. So I'm assuming that there is another motion that need to be made for her to reconsider that vote.
So the vote to reconsider needs to be made by a person who was on the prevailing side. Anyone who voted yes originally in the first vote could make a motion to reconsider. Counselor Reyes stated that she mistakenly, when asked the question, she said no, but her intention was yes, but she was not on the prevailing side. She was on the losing side. So as a result, she can make the motion. Only, only, only counselors who voted yes could make the motion to reconsider.
Okay.
Is that clear?
I'd like to make the motion to amend this item to state that the money will be used through the community block grant process and will be open to all nonprofit self-serving Lawrence Youth.
The motion has been made. Is there a second?
Counsel Peano, can you repeat the motion again, please?
Sure. So it's essentially restating what the mayor said. Since we weren't provided with, you know, documents sort of supporting it, this is essentially putting into words what the mayor said. That the money will be used, the money will be used through the community block grant process and will be open to all nonprofits serving Lawrence Youth. So if you're a 501(c)(3) and you serve Lawrence Youth, you'd be able to apply.
Second the motion.
Has been made and properly seconded. Any further discussion? Counsel.
Just want to make sure one more time at the administration what their opinion is of this motion.
Works for me. I appreciate Counsel Peano's classification and I think it's appropriate.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, seeing there's none. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Vice President LaPlante, on the motion.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Present.
Noted. Counsel Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Counsel Peano.
Yes.
Counsel Abdu.
Yes.
Counsel Selena Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel Anna Levy.
Yeah.
Counsel Estel Reyes noted and Counsel President.
My vote is yes. Carries?
President in favor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now moving on. We have 12420 under all business. This is a presentation of Stephanie Infante from the Lawrence Technical School Committee. By reviewing the notes, I know that there were, there has been request the opinion of the attorney in reference to this matter. We have received the opinion of the city attorney in regards to it. Mr. Clerk, we have received two letters of interest, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so where do we stand on, on this matter right now? Should I just send it to the, the personal committee to interview both candidates?
What, what it suggests is that, as in, in the past, what the council has done is to enter an order for, for the hearing before, I believe, now the city joint session of the city council and the representative, representatives of the Lawrence School Department pursuant to the agreement for the Greater Lawrence Technical School District. That representative according to the city attorney's opinion. And my apologies if I get it wrong, is the, I'll call it the anachronism. The Lawrence Educational, I want to call, I always want to call it the association, but it's not, but it's the school board. I, I think Counsel Peano and Counsel Rodriguez know the terminology better than I do and I apologize for that. The Lawrence School Committee is represented by that lawful agency at this point. I'm not sure how many members that is. I think that's five members now. Is that correct, Counsel Peano?
I would, I would have to do the math, but the mayor's here.
It is, it's, it's the Lawrence Alliance for Education.
Thank you.
Which has a seven members. Yeah. It's in a seven, the members of the seven people, seven people.
Seven. Oh, my goodness, it grew. Again, what I would do is I, I would on behalf of the council solicit a, a, a date and a time that would be convenient to both boards. The schedule of the meeting and the advanced schedule of the meeting within the 48-hour notice to conduct interviews of the two candidates, invite the candidates and then hold that hearing. That would be the next step. Whether the council chooses to table this at the full council, I don't think there's a need to do that. I, I certainly will follow this through until it is scheduled in, schedule a hearing date unless the council sees fit to schedule the hearing date and secure that by vote of this council. And then I would just invite the Lawrence Educational Alliance members.
I think that we should take a date now, given that all the counselors are here. That is something that is very important. We need to ensure that the city of Lawrence continues to have proper representation in this board. So I would like for us to schedule.
Counsel President?
Mayor Rivera?
Sorry to interrupt. I, I think, you know, again, I, I know in the past we've had joint meetings. And I don't know how, how necessarily formal that is compared to the, if that's really gets called for in the charter. But, you know, if it's not specifically called for a joint meeting, even though we've had committees in the past, just a way again for expedition. Because, you know, there are, the schools are making, the vocational schools are making very important decisions that impact Laurentians. And so having a representative on there is very important. So I'm not sure if the charter specifically calls for a joint meeting because if it doesn't, there's no reason why this board couldn't interview and vote and then our board interview and vote.
I lost you for, for the last part.
If it's specific in the charter that it has to be a joint meeting, then so be it. But again, in, in try to expedite it, this board could set up a time and interview the candidates. We could set up a time and interview your cabinet and get that both. And then, you know, the votes be combined. And then the person be seated right after both because I, I think it's going to be very difficult to get your nine people together and then get seven other people together in this environment.
When, when is your next meeting scheduled?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but I'll check and I'll let you know in a couple of minutes.
Because what we could do, we could do the 28th next week. And, you know, it, it, not everyone likely be present and that's okay.
Counsel President, if I may interject, that would be contrary to the opinion of the city attorney and contrary to the contract. This is not a charter issue, but a, a contract agreement for the district of the Greater Lawrence Technical School as cited by the city attorney. It's an opinion. This is a joint meeting, meeting by the agreement of that, that school district. It has nothing to do with the city charter.
Yeah, no, so we should, we should go ahead and do it as a joint meeting. And, you know, schedule something for next week. It has happened before in which not all counselors are available. And all of us should participate in all the discussion, but that's not always doable. So, so I could, I, I think that we could do probably next Tuesday, the 28th. That will give us plenty of time to publish and invite the candidates and we should be present. Because that sounds like a fair day for everyone.
Counsel President?
Counsel Payano?
Is it possible to give the, I forget what they're called, the, the LAE board? Yeah, the, is it possible to give the LAE board perhaps two, two dates that way?
The 28th and the 30th.
Those, those dates work for me, so I'm okay if you put them that way. And I, and again, I know the, we have two members that come from out of town. And so, and a member Mariano, who's a member of the school board, member Silverio, who's a resident here in the city, myself, member Andors, who's also a parent and lives in the city. Custodial, Dr. Custodial Laura from the Northern Community College, she spends most of her day here. So I think that if given the right amount of heads up, that we might be able to get people there either the 28th or 30th. And the superintendent, who's, I'm not sure if she's a voting member of the LAE board, but.
So we'll give two dates, the 28th and the 30th. Thank you, Counsel Payano. Okay, whichever date works, you know.
I'll communicate those dates to the LAE board via the superintendent's office and the mayor's office and, and certainly consult with you, Counsel President, as to the final selection. And then post it and schedule it.
Fantastic. Thank you. Okay, so moving on. We have, is there a motion to table the document, document 12420?
We'll table.
Motion has been made by Counselor Dela Cruz. Second. Motion to table has been, I think two people made the motion. So it was second.
Second the motion, can I ask a question?
No, it's, it's been second by Counselor Payano. We, we have a second. So no further discussion. I just need to clarify the motion table. Two people spoke at the same time. I believe it was you and Counselor Dela Cruz. Counselor Dela Cruz, was that you?
Yes, it was me.
Okay, so the motion was made by Counselor Dela Cruz and second.
Parliamentary procedure, question.
We cannot engage in any discussions at this point.
Not a discussion, it's, it's a parliamentary procedure.
It's a parliamentary question. What is your parliamentary question?
Are we accepting the resignation or not?
Resignation has already been accepted. I, I understanding it has been in the last meeting. I was.
Are you sure? I just want to make sure that we go through the process. I mean, we don't have, we don't do all the stuff without doing the, the little, the small things, which is important.
Mr. Clerk, was the resignation accepted as this?
I think it was about three weeks ago.
Yeah, the 16th.
I, I don't see a formal motion to accept the resignation on file, recorded in any vote. If the Counsel President wishes to take that vote now, per your discretion, withdrawal of the table motion at this point.
Counselor Dela Cruz? Wish to withdraw your motion?
Drop my motion?
Motion withdrawn. Is there a motion to officially accept the resignation of Stephanie Infante?
Or move.
Motion has been made by, I think, three people spoke. Who made the motion?
Or move.
Counselor Payano? Okay, is there a second? Counselor Rodriguez? Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
On the motion to, to accept the resignation as submitted, Counsel Estel Reyes noted, Counsel Levy?
Yeah.
Counsel Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Abdu?
Yes.
Counsel Peano?
Yes.
Counsel Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Counsel Giovanni Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel, Vice President LaPlante?
Yes.
And Counsel President Vasquez?
Yes, the motion carries. Counsel Dela Cruz, you want to make a motion to table again?
Or move.
Yes, motion to table.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second the motion.
Second.
It's been second. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counsel Vice President LaPlante?
Yes.
Counsel Giovanni Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Counsel Peano?
Yes.
Counsel Abdu?
Yes.
Counsel Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Levy?
Yes.
Counsel Estel Reyes noted and Counsel President?
Yes, the motion carries. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
You're welcome, Counsel President.
Okay, moving on, we have any table matters, counselors, that you wish to take off the table?
Yes, President.
Counselor Dela Cruz?
Yes, I would like to discuss a little bit. Item 12118, which is about recycling ordinance.
There's a motion on the floor to take document 121.
Eighteen.
Second.
Okay, there's a second on the floor. All those who to take it off the table, please say aye. Mr. Clerk?
12118 as to the roll call and the motion to remove from table. We have Counsel Estel Reyes noted, Counsel Levy? Counsel Levy?
Present.
Noted. Counsel Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Abdu?
Yes.
Counsel Peano?
Yes.
Counsel Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Counsel Giovanni Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Vice President LaPlante?
Yes.
Counsel President Vasquez?
Yes.
Seven in favor, one present.
Okay, Counseler Dela Cruz?
Yes, I noticed that we have been working, Mr. Payano, you have been working a lot with this ordinance. And I see that we have plenty advertisement on, on the radio. My question is, are we have a possibility of getting an advertisement, more advertisement on that, on newspaper and TV? I think people need to be more educated. The radio program hasn't been enough to inform the community about this. Then I would like to thank correspondent to the major to see if we can get the possibility of publicizing the needs of recycling, but now more publicity on, on maybe TV if we can afford that and on newspapers.
Okay, so there's a motion by Counselor Dela Cruz requesting the mayor to increase the advertisement for purposes of recycling. Is there a second?
Oh, quick, quick clarification or question about the motion? To Counselor Dela Cruz? Is that motion is to, I mean, I don't know, is that to approve with that amendment, that amendment to have more advertised? Or just to have more advertising and that's it?
We already have a recycling coordinator, an assistant coordinator. And, and we have a lot of advertisement on radio. Now we need the final, to finalize the proposal, we need to advertise on TV and to advertise on newspapers. Because that way, when we come back with the rules and regulations and the ordinance that we want to put on that rule, we, the city is covered with all the education that we were supposed to put in place. Then at this moment, I would like to see a letter being written to the major requesting that we need to see the more advertisement. Because we already have everything that we need. Instead that now we're going to be working on the ordinance. But to do that, we need a little bit more of education and promotion. Did I answer your question, Counsel Rodriguez?
I mean, the Counselor Payano have worked hardly on this ordinance. And the new, and the new recycling coordinator has, has been working hard as well, as well as the previous recycling coordinator. They were working very hard on this ordinance. And I think that it is, it is great to have more education. But it's also, we are also need to have this ordinance approved.
Okay, but I think we need like five more steps before getting the ordinance approved. Because remember, we're going to be, we already educating the community, asking the community to be part of before we're thinking about putting an ordinance where there's going to be a fine. Then I think we have plenty of time to continue educate the community and to work together as team. Because I think we need a little bit more of education. More of information, more of engagement from the neighborhood associations, from the schools. Then after that, then I would like to talk about the ordinance.
I have question.
Counselor Selena Reyes?
Counselor Payano, can you explain a little bit more about the proposal?
Sure. So I, I, I don't have the, the language in front of me, but I'll speak in sort of some of like the really big general themes around it. So it would essentially, before I talked about the mandate, I'll talk about some of the administrative things that I think make this a very sort of special type of ordinance and differentiates it from some of the ordinances that are around the area. So one of the things that it mandates is that the DPW creates essentially an advisory group of individuals that are not just, that have an interest in recycling or have experience in recycling, but also in trash as well. And it also mandates that once a year, they essentially report to the city council and to the city with a plan on how they're going to not just increase and better recycling, but also deal with the, you know, basically the, the, the problem that we have when it comes to trash disposal and how those costs, you know, keep increasing. So essentially they'd be creating a plan, following it through, reporting back to the city council how that went. The other part to it is that it creates an opportunity for DPW, the recycling coordinator, to do, to use incentives to try to improve, you know, recycling efforts in the area. One of the things that we talked about. One of the things that we talked about a year ago in the ordinance committee, uh, the previous, uh, recycling coordinator mentioned, uh, you know, uh, giving money to, uh, the neighborhood associations like, uh, that were doing like really well and, uh, to allow them to do like some type of summer activity. Um, uh, the piece that there's a lot of focus on is around the actual mandate of, of regarding recycling and, uh, what the, um, at the ordinance committee, what the Director of Inspecial Service, uh, Director of DPW and the recycling coordinator, uh, spoke about is even though that there is a fine in place if somebody is not recycling, that it's not like they're given right away, uh, that there's a several step process and that for at least the first, uh, year and a half, two years, um, they weren't planning on giving out fines. And, you know, one of the things that the Director, uh, Special Service said and recycling coordinator sort of followed through, uh, was that the goal was not to give out fines. The goal is to, uh, educate. But one of the things that, that happens by us creating a, a mandate like that is that while we are then, um, able to get grants from the state, uh, uh, for, um, for certain funds, so funds for, um, that DPW can use for education, uh, but also, I forget the actual number, but it's several hundred thousand dollars over the course of several years that, uh, DPW or the City of Lawrence can then use to buy recycling, uh, containers. Uh, and the idea was not to buy the, 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 those small bins where paper just gets blown away, but, uh, buying, uh, containers are actually, uh, you know, bigger that have a, um, a top that can, uh, can, uh, can be closed. So there's, there's a lot of moving parts to it, but I think the, the important part is that not only would this, uh, essentially modernize, uh, our, uh, city's response to trash and recycling, uh, and create, uh, a strategy to try to save us, uh, some money, um, but it also allows us that over the course of a few years, we can, uh, replace small blue containers that have been around for more than a decade, I, I think like since I was in high school, uh, basically, um, and, uh, replace them with something modern that people can use, because a lot of people don't even have those containers. Imagine if they were given out in 2002 and that house has changed hands twice, um, those folks don't have those containers. So that's kind of like the general, uh, sort of picture of, um, what that recycling ordinance says.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Payano.
Is there anyone else?
Yeah, we, uh, I would like to table this, uh, item 121, but at the same time, thank correspondent to the mayor.
Like what?
Uh, we need advertisement on TV and news.
Uh, is there any second here, Councilor Rodriguez?
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, Council President, uh, I just want to clarify a few terms on, on the ordinance, uh, and this is basically how other cities and towns are, are managing this ordinance and how the people can definitely, uh, avoid having any particular issue, uh, with this ordinance in terms of fines. A lot of people are talking about fines, this and this and that. People, if people just take out the recycling bin and put it on the, in the, in front of their house, that automatically take anybody's out of any type of, uh, any type of, uh, fines. Uh, and that's basically how other cities and towns are dealing with this. If you take out the recycling bin, you're not getting a ticket, uh, because that means that you're recycling. And if you're taking the recycling out, that means that you're taking the effort of do what is, what is needed. So that's basically how many people, uh, many cities and towns are dealing with this ordinance, uh, and, 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 and fines shouldn't be the main focus on this. It's more like, we just talked about this when we approved about a good amount of money, I believe it was, uh, more than 300,000 or 600,000 for trash, that tonnage of recycling is half the amount of money of any tonnage of regular trash. That's the main point of talking point here. We are saving money if we recycling more. We are saving money to the city if we are doing that, that's something that is going to help everybody in the community, which is recycling. And, and, uh, the tonnage of recycling, at one point, there were no charge for it. Now it's half of the money of any tonnage of trash. And, uh, and that's basically a lot of money if we don't, if we keep on not recycling. That's all I need to say. Thank you, Council President.
Councilor Payano.
Uh, so I'll, I'll, I'll just say this, uh, I think one of the, I forget if it was the direct, the former director of the DPW or, uh, the former recycling coordinator, but one of them mentioned that in all the area communities that have had a similar law, um, you know, looking back on the last five, well, now six years, uh, they had only given out one fine. So out of, out of the area communities that she was looking at, I don't remember what, um, what all those towns were, uh, she only found one occasion where a community actually gave out a fine for recycling. Uh, then when she spoke to the, the communities, essentially, um, they used that, uh, sort of the, the threat of a, essentially that they, they need to just get to the threat just by, um, you know, sort of having that conversation with them and telling them that that now was a rule, uh, it pushed people to, um, to follow it. So, uh, that's, I think that's, that, that part is important, especially for those that fear that the city might start fining people. Uh, you know, one of the things I look at sometimes, uh, in my neighborhood, uh, on trash day, the trash is overfilling. Technically, there's a huge fine, uh, when, when that occurs. We don't find people for that. We have conversations with folks to try to educate them so that they know what the rules are and, and hopefully facilitate, uh, them to following those rules. And I think that I, I, I trust, um, Special Service and I trust the people in the DPW to sort of follow, uh, what they're saying, uh, that they're not going to take advantage of essentially how, uh, we're empowering them, um, in this, um, in this new way.
Thank you, Councilor Payano. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Mr. President? Mr. President?
Councilor Reyes.
Mr. President?
Uh, Councilor Levy.
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, according to what I hear, we have to buy or people have to buy that, uh, their recycled bins? Because I see that in, yes, did somebody respond there? Yes, I see that in other city, uh, the recycling is being provided by, by DPW, and it's bigger than the one that we use for the trash.
That container costs $100.
So people have to buy it?
Yes.
I do not believe that's the case, um, if we were to approve the ordinance, but, you know, that's, that's information that we go ask our recycling coordinator, DPW director. Uh, I don't think we.
Well, this is one of the thing that he was telling, I'm sorry, Mr. President, but this is one of the thing that he was telling today on the radio, that people have to buy it and.
So, so, so respectfully, I wouldn't take the radio as a forum for us to communicate with our, you know, directors.
What, what, what's the recycle coordinator that was talking today?
Yeah, so let's invite them to this forum, which is the appropriate forum to ask questions. Um, you know, the, the radios are, you know, it's not a forum to legislate. I think that here is the appropriate forum to do so. Uh, i- if we wish, you know, as a council to move and invite them, I think that this is the appropriate route, uh, you know, not by, by discussions that have occurred over the radio. Is there a motion to send correspondence to both recycling and DPW?
A move.
Second.
Motion has been made and it's been properly second, um, and a discussion on the motion. Since there's none, Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Council President, the motion is to send correspondence to DPW and who else?
Recycling.
And recycling.
And the mayor.
The mayor.
I accept the amendment.
And the motion is by Council Payano, is it?
A Councilor Rodriguez. Councilor Levy with Councilor Rodriguez.
Got it.
Point of, point of information, point of problem in, in inquiry, Mr. President.
Um, Mr. Vice President?
Sorry, as we're about to take this vote, I know who the correspondence is going to and who it's coming from, just the gist of what the correspondence is saying.
Councilor Levy?
We wanted them to come by in front of us so we can, uh, that they can answer questions regarding, you know, how we're going to move forward with the recycle. So regarding like what I asked for, see the people have to buy their recycled bins or, uh, how we're going to start it, what they have to do it. Uh, Maria asked for more promotions on, you know, the TV, the radio, because we still need to educate the people, uh, on this regard, so we can only start from one day to the other. There's still so many things that is going on right now, and we've been talking and talking, but as I always said, it's something missing between the city, between us and between the program.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes, uh, I just want to, I mean, um, just trying to clarify a few things, uh, that I have in mind. What we can do with, like we have done before with any type of ordinance is that we, we have this ordinance or any ordinance before and that, eh, enact that ordinance six months from the day that we take the vote, and that way we, we take that time to educate the community and be able, or any amount of time, it could be a year, it could be six months or whatever, and have that time to educate the community and develop a program to, to do that. In the meantime, we actually asking those departments, go ahead and educate the community on recycling, well, that's what they're doing every day. Every time that the recycling is not picked up and they get a lot, and people get a, get a sticker, eh, in education format to go out right after, telling the people, this is how we should recycle. And they've been doing that for quite some time. So I just want to kind of like, you know, wondering like until when we have to keep on educating people, um, about recycling, if that's, we keep on, if that keep on happening. What we need here is accountability, a level of accountability for, from the community that we are on the same team, working to having a better allowance on recycling. If we, this ordinance is going to provide that level of accountability. Uh, and the law, the ordinance doesn't have to be enacted right away. We have some time, we can definitely approve it without, with, you know, having some time that eventually it's any other repercussion is going to take place. But the most important thing here is, is a level of accountability that we need to ask the community to do so. Until we have this, uh, an ordinance that it, that says you have to recycle, people are going to keep on saying they don't have to, they won't do it. A- and this is basically what, how, how any type of ordinance work. That's why we have ordinance to organize things, to make people conscious about, about how things should be done and, and to change behaviors. But we're not doing this with recycling. We're just expecting people to keep on doing what they're supposed to do, but there is not a level of accountability right behind it. And, uh, and, and in terms of, uh, just changing the topic very quick, uh, about the, uh, the questions, uh, Mr. Levy was asking, if people need to buy those recyc- recycling bins, uh, up to right now without the ordinance in place?
Councilor Rodriguez, we have to stay specific to the, the motion, which is correspondence.
Well, the correspondence was related to the, the, the trash bins, the recycling bins.
Yeah, you specifically stated that you were going to change the subject, so.
To that, I'm going to stay with, with our topic. Uh, so if we enact this ordinance, the City of Lawrence will receive funds from DPA, from the state, which is specifically to provide recycling bins to the public for free, once we enact the ordinance. In the meantime, right now, yes, people need to buy the recycling bins. If we actually enact the ordinance, people won't have to buy it, because we, we receive grants to buy and purchase those, those recycling bins. That's the whole point.
Okay, so I believe Councilor De La Cruz, and this is the last, um, part of the discussion, then we're moving on, okay, councilors?
Motion to table.
Motion has been made.
The correspondent, uh, we already wanted to stand, we just wanted to.
Stand.
Correspondent, different, the three different departments.
We do have a motion on the floor, right, Mr. Clerk, or?
That's correct, uh, the motion is on the floor, is pending, uh, regarding correspondence as clarified by Council La Plant, uh, to DPW, the recycling coordinator and the mayor's office.
Yeah, roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Council Vice President La Plant.
Yes.
Council Rodriguez.
Yes.
Council De La Cruz.
Yes.
Council Payano.
Yes.
Council Abdu.
Yes.
Council Selena Reyes. Council Reyes, Selena Reyes?
No, that was Councilor Levy who voted.
Right, Council Selena Reyes, please.
Yes.
Council Levy.
Yes.
Council Estel Reyes noted and Council President.
Um, my vote is yes.
Recorded. As for the item itself, Council President, per your discretion.
Okay, there's, um.
Further motion?
The, the further motions by Councilor De La Cruz.
Yeah, do you wish to recall, uh, call that?
Councilor De La Cruz?
Yes, table, uh, motion, uh, 121, please.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion has been made and properly second to table. All those in favor, please, uh, Mr. Clerk.
Council Estel Reyes noted, Council Levy.
Yes.
Council Selena Reyes.
President.
President noted. Council Abdu.
Yes.
Council Payano. Council Payano? Uh, I think, I see you're trying to say yes, I think you're, there you go.
Yes.
Yes, yes, sir. Council De La Cruz.
Yes.
Council Rodriguez.
Oh.
Noted, Council La Plant.
Yes.
I said yes, Mr. Maloney.
Okay, I got you, yes, sir, I got that, Council President, per your discretion. Uh, Council La Plant.
Yes.
And Council President.
Um, yes, motion carries.
Seven in favor, one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Now moving on, we have, um, new business, this document 134-20 is going to the ordinance committee, document 135-20, ordinance committee, 136-20, ordinance committee, 137-20, ordinance committee, 139-20, ordinance committee. One thirty-nine twenty, Ordinance Committee. Given that this is a removal, we could potentially just order the public hearing.
Uh, uh, um, Council President? It was a request long time ago and it was not approved. The person who is, um, thirty-four Kendos three, the owner of the house, she works, she works and she cannot be at a public meeting, then, um, I would like to, to take that out of order, please.
Uh, so, so I'll, I'll say, if she cannot be here, it's okay, Councilor De La Cruz.
If I, if I may, Council President, uh, the, the item, uh, has a famous similar item that was, uh, uh, defeated by vote of the council. It might be more expedient rather than re-advertise. Take the item that was defeated, put it on as all business and seek a motion to reconsider. Uh, that would save the public hearing order, that would save money for re-advertising and then place it back on the council agenda. I think it might be more expedient. I mean, I don't wanna presume the council's vote to reconsider the defeat of the motion, but it's the same idea.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that, I think that sounds.
Very good.
Yeah, document one forty twenty is going to the Ordinance Committee. One forty-one twenty, Ordinance Committee. Document one forty twenty is going to the, uh, Personal Committee. Document one forty-four twenty is Finance. One forty-nine twenty, uh, councilors, I believe we have, um, Director Velez from Health and Human Services on the line. She must have exited.
No, I'm here, I'm here.
Okay, she's still here. So we do have, uh, two documents, uh, one forty-nine twenty and one fifty twenty, which are, uh, disclosure by municipal employees for the Recreation Department. Um, so what has happened is that both of these, uh, individuals, uh, are city employees as well and they are this in the city, in the Recreation Department temporarily for six weeks. Um, and in order for them to get paid, they essentially have already worked four weeks, if I'm not mistaken, uh, but we aren't able to pay them until this disclosure is approved.
Motion to take it out of table both at the same time?
So motion to, to?
To take item one forty-nine?
Yeah, they're not on, on table matters, so we will have to suspend the rules and take them as an emergency.
Take it as an emergency, so move on that.
It is an emergency.
So motion has been made, uh, by Council Rodriguez, it's been second by Councilor De La Cruz, any discussion? Since there's none, discussion, Council Peano?
So, uh, I'm, I'm just trying to, to understand it, so, um, so these individuals have been working for four weeks. Wh- why wasn't the, um, sort of application, um, to go through this process put in, um, before that, before they started working?
So, like, can, if I may please, through your, uh, counsel, yes. Um, so they have not been working, they start, the program started, um, July sixth. Um, once I knew that they had been working for the school department, remember, um, I'm actually like stepping in while the director of, um, the Recreation Department is out on family medical leave and these are employees that come to him every year for the summer program and we decided to proceed with the summer program. As, um, Jessica from the library mentioned, we've been working on these programs. Um, I know, they took, they came to me and told me that they had worked for the school, so I, right away, um, emailed, um, Frank Bonet and he advised me that you needed to go before you. So they worked for two days, they got paid, they'll be paid for two days because they did work for two days and then I've put them on hold until I came before you and that's why it's on as an emergency.
Um, follow-up question. Um, Martha, is, so is, so they're, they're currently working for Lawrence Public Schools as well?
They worked for the Lawrence Public Schools during the, uh, summer school, the, I mean, dur- during the school year and then in the summer, they worked for the, uh, Recreation Department in the summer program for six weeks.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
So, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, so, so they're, they're not currently working for Lawrence Public Schools? They're, they're gonna work, uh, when, when the school starts, they're, um, that's when they'll start, uh, you know, putting in hours for LPS?
Correct.
Okay.
I believe I saw it, Councilor Abdu, if I'm not mistaken. No? Okay, so moving on, uh, since there's no further questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Council Vice President La Plant, I believe this is a motion to suspend the rules and approve or just to suspend the rules, Council President?
Suspend the rules and approve.
Suspend the rule.
Thank you. Got it. Council Vice President La Plant?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council De La Cruz?
Yes.
Council Peano?
Yes.
Council Abdu?
Yes.
Council Selena Reyes? Council Levy?
Yes.
Council Estel Reyes noted and Council President?
Yes, the motion carries. Yeah, document one fifty twenty.
Thank you, everyone.
Uh, one more, one fifty twenty is the same situation, is a motion to suspend the rules. Which has been made by Council Rodriguez and second by Council De La Cruz. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Council Estel Reyes noted, Council Levy?
Yes.
Council Ray, uh, Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Council Abdu?
Yes.
Council Peano?
Yes.
Council De La Cruz?
Yes.
Council Giovanni Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council La Plant?
Yes.
And Council President?
Yes, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Council President.
Uh, next document is document one fifty-one twenty, it's a request to amend a Sony ordinance per Massachusetts General Law, chapter forty, uh, chapter forty-eight, section five. Uh, it's going down to the Ordinance Committee, I'm also gonna send it to the Sony Board.
Where was that, Council President, ordinance and where?
On the Sony Board.
One fifty?
One twenty.
One fifty-one twenty, to ordinance and where?
Sony.
Sony. I suggest Planning Department?
And Planning, and Planning as well.
Yes.
Document one fifty-two twenty is an order authorizing to spend grants. It's going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document one fifty-four twenty, it's an order authorizing to spend grant funds, it's going also to the Budget and Finance Committee. And document one fifty-five twenty, Lawrence School openings is going to the,
Fifty?
Uh, Public Safety, Councilor La Plant, your intention.
Council La Plant or Councilor Peano?
Uh, Councilor Peano.
Just making sure. Um, i- if it could be put, uh, for, uh, Public Safety, intention is, uh, to ask the school departments to, uh, uh, give the city council sort of an update as to, uh, what the plans are gonna be, uh.
Okay, it's going down to the Public Safety Committee. Council Rodriguez?
Yes, uh, I would like to, um, somehow, um, it is, eh, discharge an item from the Ordinance Committee. Uh, this is a resolution, uh, about the census that I actually, uh, proposed, uh, back then probably like six, seven weeks ago. And, uh, and suspend the rules and bring it up to the full council and have a proper discussions about a resolution that is in the Ordinance Committee right now. Uh, and discuss a, a, discuss it at this level and possibly approve it if possible.
Second?
I don't, I don't know the document number either, I'm trying to look. The, the other, the other issue is that it's not on the agenda, Council President, but per your discretion.
Um, councilors, remember that we do have to, so what, what we could do is for the next meeting, put it as an all business. We will need to identify what the emergency measure is. Remember, we had this issue before and I wouldn't wanna have to go through it twice. So my recommendation will be that we identify, we put it on the agenda as an all business and then we can discharge it then.
Can we, uh, can we have this item, uh, as an all business on the next meeting, which is next week on Tuesday on the twenty-eighth?
Yeah, just send the document number to the clerk and we'll do it.
I'll find it.
All right, thank you, thank you, okay. Mr. Councilor Levy?
Yes, I would like to take a motion to take a item ninety-four twenty, uh, out of the, of the table, please.
Which document, I'm sorry, can you repeat again?
The ninety-four twenty.
Ninety-four twenty, uh, there's a motion on the floor.
Second?
It's been second, that's election update during public, all location staffing, uh, Council Levy?
Yes, I would like to hear from, uh, the, the, Mr., uh, from the clerks, an updated and also regarding the different places right now, that's, uh, we have to decide it, where it's gonna be, uh, or what we're gonna use it for the next election. And I know that we are in a hurry at this moment.
Do, do you wanna call them, uh, have the motion, the roll call on the motion, Council President?
Yes, roll call.
One second. Council La Plant, Council Vice President La Plant?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council De La Cruz?
Yes.
Council Peano?
Yes.
Council Abdu?
Yes.
Council Reyes, Selena Reyes? Council Levy?
Yes.
Council Estel Reyes noted, Council President?
Uh, yes.
So, give me, if you could give me one minute, I'll be right with you. Sorry for the delay, I'll try to make this quick and as easily and painless as possible. Which elections, you know this is impossible. For the ease of convenience and discussion, I've pre-designated certain numbers and I've sent a memo to all the councilors uh, via the, uh, the materials and in, uh, the I P files. This is a project that started in the clerk's office in March, the day after COVID was let go. So I would start with item ninety-four A of two twenty regarding Ward B Precinct One. That's Mary Immaculate, Mary Immaculate, we've been told, I had a formal meeting with the management company that they will not allow us back into Mary Immaculate for this year. Uh, re-inviting us, the City of Lawrence, back to its polling location, possibly in twenty-twenty-one or sometime thereafter. In order to replace that polling location and necessarily replacing it, I informed the council and the mayor's office that we were looking at three possible nearby locations. The North Common Educational Complex, the old former Lawrence High School, the main branch library. And the third one was the center, the Senior Center, one fifty-five Havel Street. Those locations were reviewed by this office and reviewed by the city engineer. The engineering report arrived today, there's a score sheet provided with that location, uh, or that location review and a review of all locations that, uh, I'll inform you about tonight. Uh, the bottom line after meeting with the city engineer today is that all locations pass the ADA requirements as of today or as of the date of the report, but they do pass. So every one of them are ADA accessible, some are a little better than other, others. Locations, uh, certainly, um, this, a decision the council must make. The other part of, part of this puzzle is that the state has now chimed in with the legislative, um, approval of recent legislation that somewhat changes the poll location movement. Not a lot, but it puts a lot more onus, we'll say, on the city clerk to advise you folks, advise the mayor, the public officials as to locations, but also to request that any vote that be taken, be done in confirmation that the locations are not being changed in a way that would impact or change, what's the wording, polling cha- uh, places are not going to be placed, uh, for any other reasons other than, and I'll suggest legitimate reasons that won't dis- impact disparate adverse impact on the basis of race, national origin, disability, income or age. I have not done a complete study as to all those categories. I think there are congressional committees that are, are doing that and have not done it for years. But I will tell you this much, the changes that I am suggesting, uh, and have imparted to this council are due primarily, if not solely, because of COVID. And that goes true for, uh, Mary Immaculate and all the other locations you'll hear about tonight. Uh, the, there are secondary impacts that I really don't wanna get into or discuss, that's for the council to decide. But the more immediate need is to provide a live polling location with some certainty as soon as possible. The three places that are offered, uh, for your consideration, again, are the old high school, the library and the senior center. Um, and I'll just leave it at that, if there are any, uh, questions about either of those three locations, uh, short of providing a recommendation, um, I would suggest to this council, uh, that is, any of those three locations would serve best. I certainly, uh, a- am not partial to the senior center just because of the optics. Uh, I am concerned that placing a polling location from one senior facility to another poses a whole set of problems. Uh, that, uh, would probably be publicly misinterpreted where we have two other locations that are suitable and, uh, viable for at least the next two elections, which can always be changed at any time if they don't work.
Okay, thank you, Council, um, Mr. Clerk, Councilor Levy?
I, I, I didn't get elected yet, I'm, I, I'm not working, I couldn't do your job.
So, um, what I'm being reading here, you know, according to what I read, so regarding the three locations right now, uh, the two ones that is much better is the, the Lauren Public School and really the Senior Center, so I would like to, uh, the council, just to take a ball on one of those, you know, that can be replaced and for the MI, uh, poll location.
And for more motion, do you have a motion, Councilor Levy?
I think that's, I'm gonna make a motion to use for now and like, uh, uh, the clerk said, if we don't like it or if something is not good, uh, we can still, uh, change it, but I, I will go with the Lauren Public School. I'm sorry, with the Lauren Library.
Library?
Yes.
And, and keep in mind, Council, just to interject slightly, um, all these approvals are subject to a veto. And the mayor, uh, and certainly that I encourage and certainly have been trying to, uh, myself as well to, uh, concur or consult with the mayor. Um, and again, uh, I, I suggested that he contact the council directly to make his wishes known, to, to streamline it. I mean, I, I, I don't wanna send this up expecting a veto and come back. We have slight time to do that, but I, I would not prefer that as you would not either, I'm sure.
Well, I just remember, I remember that, uh, uh, the last meeting when we discussed it, we said that we're gonna send the correspondent to the mayor also and we're gonna think, uh, because if we decided to go with one of the school, uh, we, I know that we need the permio, the authorization to use it. So I don't know where we.
And, and I did, I sent correspondence to the mayor and to all these locations, everything that you have, the mayor has. Um, and s- some slight discussion was had regarding the locations with the mayor. Uh, and again, encouraging the conversation be, uh, between the mayor and the council might be, uh, and, and the superintendent in fact, regarding the locations, uh, as well as, uh, any other officials that would be necessary.
What? Um.
I second the motion. The motion has been made and properly second. Any further question?
Discussion.
Discussion.
Council Vice President La Plant and then Councilor Maria De La Cruz.
I just wanna hear from the clerk because he's on the front lines on this, a very pointed question. Is this something that you think, is this something that you think you can work with, Mr. Clerk?
All these locations and some places I can work with, certain. All these locations and some places I can work with certainly. Um, uh, mostly because they're ADA compliant. Uh, my task, and again, to kind of interject a little, is to complete a report to the Secretary of State's office, who, um, is like the ravenous, uh, ravenous plant who wants more. Uh, they'll continually want more throughout. I wanna sure, surely get, uh, their blessing along the way, which usually doesn't come. But I think if we supply it with, uh, all the necessities that are required by the new statute, I think we'll be fine.
The President?
Counseler Levy?
Yes, another reason why I'm, why also, um, the Lauren Public Library is because it's like, it's like practically in the center. If we decided like it's, uh, close to MI, is it more closer to the MI than, uh, than the center? In just, in that case.
President?
Uh, Counsel Dela Cruz?
Yes. We have to remember that on Election Day, sometimes the children, they don't go to school. Then if they have the library, they can go to the library. The old high school on Lebanon Street is, is the great facility and it's big, it's huge, and it provides a lot of space. And it's across from, uh, Mary Immaculate as well. Then my recommendation is to use the old high school and to leave the library for the kids to, if they don't have school, that they can go to the library that day. On the Election Day.
If I, if I could offer a response in terms of the research I've done, uh, the library, uh, facility would be the auditorium and not the main library. None of the facilities would be used other than the ma- main auditorium. The second issue is that the, the, at the clerk's office since two thousand nine has been recommending to the superintendent to close the schools on every election day for other public safety reasons, not COVID, uh, to assure that, uh, assaults do not occur, that makes sure that the students are safe and that the doors are not locked and the open access to the public is provided. That same message has been communicated to the superintendent and to the mayor and to you as well, uh, that it be done for this election, particularly in addition to the COVID, uh, issues so that there are none that, that present themselves on Election Day. We will have members of the public attending and voting and showing up in person, which we will be keeping distant and implying PP, uh, protections. Um, that has not been communicated as to whether or not the schools will close, but it was affirmed by the mayor verbally at a meeting that the schools would be available for use. Uh, and that will be communicated in any selection or vote. And ultimately, the mayor can veto if the mayor decides to.
Uh, there's a motion on the floor. There's no further discussion. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
On the roll call, Counsel Estel Reyes noted, Counsel Levy?
Yes.
Counsel Selena Reyes? Selena Reyes? I see she's muted. I'll come back to that, Counsel President. Counsel Abdu?
Present.
Noted, Counsel Peano? Counsel Peano?
He's locked in.
We have a board?
Absent.
We do.
Counsel Dela Cruz?
Is this vote to pick an issue or to the library? Oh, present.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel LaPlante?
Yes.
Counsel President Vasquez?
My vote is no.
Yep, recorded. Motion fails.
Um, is there a motion to select the, the old, um, high school as a poll location?
Motion, motion to submit, uh, the near, the old high school.
Motion has been made.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Second.
Uh, motion, motion has been seconded by Counselor La-
Discussion.
Uh, discussion, Counselor LaPlante?
I just wanna, I mean, let's make this real clear. Clerk, I wanna get your opinion, is it yes or no? Do you, are you in favor of having this with you? Could you work with this at the, at the high school?
Yes.
Thank you.
Question.
And I, I would add this, if there isn't a vote taken within the next three and a half weeks, there will be no voting location.
Mr. Clerk, um, I know that you sent a very detailed message. We just dealt with the library. We're about to vote on the, on the, on the high school, old high school. What other locations are there that we possibly could go just to throw out on the table?
Last one, do you have them all? The old, old high school, the, uh, North Educational Complex Center and the library.
Say it again. The old library?
Library, library, which we just discussed, the, uh, I call it the North Educational Complex Center because I don't wanna confuse it, the old high school, this vote. And the, um, and the senior center.
And the senior center. All right. So if we, if we don't support this, the last one that you could support is, is the senior center. Um, and that, and then that we're running out of options. Is that true?
Well, yeah, I mean, we're running out of options, uh, but again, um, knowing the parliamentary procedures that are available, the council could move to reconsider, uh, and this could be taken up again. Um, and, and, you know, that's, that's how this is done, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So, roll call, Mr. Clerk?
The President?
Counsel Vice-
We started the roll call. Go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel Vice President LaPlante?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Oh.
Counsel Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Counsel Peano? Noted, Counsel Abdu?
Yes.
Counsel Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Levy?
No.
Counsel Estel Reyes noted and Counsel President?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now, as, as an addendum to that motion, and I'll, I'll summarize it at the end, uh, what the state will require, but I'll talk about that in the, in the, in the next round. The, the next round is, I called it ninety-four B pending the council's consideration of allowing that. This is Ward Three Precincts, uh, Ward D Precincts Three and Four. This is Essex Towers. Um, Essex Towers, we've been looking at, and I've provided information regarding use of the Neco Dmitri Building diagonally across from Essex Towers, as well as the Gilmet School, uh, as an alternative, which is some distance away. You guys know better as much as I do. It's about a mile away, maybe a little less, uh, up toward Budwell Street. Uh, and, uh, the other considerations that were presented to the engineer were ADA compliance. I'll cut to the quick. Uh, the mayor has actually been very helpful on this and he's intervened trying to keep the location where it is. And I'd like the opportunity to go back at it with, uh, a proposal that's being presented. And I sent a supplemental, um, proposal out today to provide for a tent for September first. Now, that tent location is a eighty by forty large tent that would be suitable. I am in the process of pursuing, uh, notice to the Secretary of State, who has approved use of tents in other, uh, similar situations in other cities and towns. The Secretary has also approved the use of uncovered areas, use of commons outside, uh, during COVID. I don't think we need to go that route. Um, the proposal has, um, applications for portable facilities, for portable hand washing stations, electricity, lighting, and it seems suitable for that purpose. So with your permission, I'd like to continue pursuing that, uh, pending the approval, which would mean that the voters, not only in Essex Towers, uh, would not, uh, be going or traveling to any other location or using other means if they choose to vote in person, but everybody in that Lower Tower Hill area, subject to certainly, uh, the jurisdiction of Counsel Rodriguez, would go to the same location. The idea here is to avoid any possibility of, um, inadvertent voter suppression or disenfranchisement for not being able to know where the location is. It would have that effect. And the primary goal is to keep the voters at the location where they are. They'd show up, vote there. So with your permission, I'd like to move on to the next, uh, location suggested, um, for a vote tonight. And that would concern District E, um, Diamond Springs, E-one, um, Diamond Springs Gardens. The reason for that location, and I identified it as ninety-four C of twenty-twenty, the idea for that location or the act of change for that location is not driven by COVID. And thank God, uh, because it's not, uh, a, a health-related issue. The building, as Counsel Abdu knows, is utilized primarily by retirees, uh, has an older population who then gravitate to the, uh, the location that's in the community room. That location, uh, not only in there and in the, um, uh, Beacon Projects area serves about two thousand two hundred and sixty-one voters, one of the largest voting blocks in the city. We were fortunate enough at the behest of Counsel Abdu, which I did not know exists, was the former Boys Club. We went there, we looked at it. I could not believe it was even still there. It is now used by the Lawrence Housing Authority. I met with, uh, Effren Rolan, I believe he's on the line as well. We reviewed the place, the city engineer looked at it and approved it as ADA accessible. There is parking, a little bit of parking in the area, but primarily it's about, what would you say, Counsel Abdu, a hundred feet, uh, maybe a hundred fifty feet away from, uh, the, uh, the Diamond Springs Building. It seems like a natural fit and I wanna thank Counsel Abdu for his suggestion. Um, Counsel Effren Rolan, the LHA Director, has offered the use of the building as long as the city sees fit and needs to use it. It may turn out to be a permanent location, but more than that, uh, he's offered assistance to fog the place and defog the place before and after the election and to assist in whatever way he can. He's always been very helpful to the election department. So this one seems to be almost a natural fit, but again, I offer that to the council. There are other locations that, uh, I did look at or consider very tangentially in the event that LHA was not ready and that would be the Frost School. I'm not inclined to put a third location at the Frost School. It already houses two. Uh, as the election becomes more populated or more people go to vote in person toward the presidential election, there will be lines out the door for socially distancing at that location. Uh, so I present that for consideration of the council on the document ninety-four C.
Okay.
Make a motion to move it to the place that was suggested by, uh, Counsel Abdu.
There's a motion on the floor by Counsel Rodriguez. It has been seconded by Counsel Abdu. Any further discussion? Seeing there's none, Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Estel Reyes noted. For C. Counsel Levy?
So this is for the use of the former Boys and Girls Club?
Yes, it's the LH, it's an LHA office now. It's essentially vacant.
Okay, no, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel Selena Reyes? Selena Reyes? Counsel Abdu?
Yes.
Counsel Peano? Noted. Counsel Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Counsel Giovanni Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel LaPlante?
Yes.
And Counsel President Vasquez?
My vote is yes. The motion passed.
The, the next issue I'd like to have the council consider and ask for a vote, uh, if we can confirm it this evening, is the location of the, uh, oh, I'm sorry, one last vote in terms of the vote presented, what the, what the new statute requires. Uh, and I present for your consideration and to formulate a motion to that degree would be a motion, if you could give me one second, please? My apologies. That the changes that are voted upon by the council this evening are not, uh, uh, change would not have a disparate adverse impact on the basis of race, national origin, disability, income, or age, uh, in, in that respect. And Counsel President, uh, advisedly, I present, uh, that to your, uh, to your presentment as someone who may wish to, um, make a motion on that item.
Motion to approve Mr. Maloney's ideas? Not to discriminate against anyone?
And, and what I'm suggesting to the council is that this is, this is statutory language that the state is requiring, uh, of the council to vote on. Um, again, I, I'm not, I, I can tell you none of this is based on, and any of those reasons.
Motion to approve that?
A motion has been made and it has been properly seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing there's none, Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Vice President LaPlante?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Counsel Peano? Noted, Counsel Abdu?
Yes.
Counsel Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Levy?
Yes.
Counsel Estel Reyes? Noted, Counsel President Vasquez?
Yes, the motion carries. Do you have any other, uh-
Yes, please, if, if you could indulge me, I'm almost done.
Go ahead, Mr. Clerk. Take your time.
Thank, thank you. Um, the state is also inquiring about early voting and has approved through its new legislation, early voting provisions for both the state primary and the final election. Um, and is prescribing specific dates for early voting for the state primary and early election. Um, the state primary early voting is required to contain, if I can have two seconds? To contain, uh, at least, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven days, one weekend, uh, intervening, six hours during a, a day per that, that weekend prescribed to this city based upon population. Uh, so it would run from Saturday, August twenty-second through Friday, August twenty-eighth. Um, I discussed this matter with the mayor in terms of the location of early voting and the manner by which early voting will be conducted. Um, early voting would take place, uh, essentially during time periods that I would ask the council to consider, and I'll present that in a proposition in a, in a moment. Um, uh, the location, uh, city council chambers, um, essentially eight hours a day and on the weekend, six hours a day, uh, for that weekend, uh, prior to the election. Uh, the voting would take place in a manner that people would have free access to enter the building, uh, enter the building, vote, and then leave the building. Um, certainly, we will have, uh, operating instructions to, uh, suggest people come as much as possible individually. I don't anticipate a lot of, uh, in-person voting for this election. Uh, it may increase for the next election, but our focus will be on, uh, mail, voting by mail in three different forms. The dates, uh, that are suggested and presented to the council, Saturday, Saturday, August twenty-second from eight-thirty AM to two-thirty PM, six hours. Sunday, August twenty-third from nine-thirty to three-thirty PM, six hours. Monday, August twenty-fourth, Tuesday, August twenty-fifth, Wednesday, August twenty-sixth, Thursday, August twenty-seventh, and Friday, August twenty-eighth, eight-thirty AM to four-thirty, to be staffed by four or five, but likely four, uh, poll workers each and every one of those days and during all hours, uh, and monitored by, uh, permanent election staff. The appropriation, and I've discussed this, I sent this to the finance director, we're approximately fifteen thousand dollars short. approximately $15,000 short to conduct the increased, um, election requirements for early voting, uh, which will be presented as, uh, COVID, uh, expenses, COVID-related expenses, because we would not be having early voting in the primary but for COVID and other provisions to allow for voting. So what I'm asking the council to do is consider those times and hours, uh, which I prepared and presented to you by email, uh, and to, uh, approve them, uh, so that we can post them on the city website and advertise them as soon as possible.
Motion to approve?
Second discussion or clarification of some of the, uh, the, uh, the, I mean, the funds and, uh, and specifically, uh, what's going to be the difference on the funds?
Motion has been made by Council Levy, it's been seconded by Council Rodriguez, and there was a question. Mr. Clerk.
As to any questions, uh, council, certainly Council Rodriguez, your question?
Yes, in terms of funds, that you were mentioning, can you clarify a little bit? I got lost a little bit.
Yeah, um, I had budgeted about, uh, set aside 6,600, requested in the FY, but 21 budget for the possibility that we might incur early voting expenses, um, in the amount of about $6,000 and about 11,000, uh, requested 11, $12,500 for the final election and budgeted those for that election. The increase in the number of days, uh, in the final election, instead of, uh, 11 days, they're going to require 15 days. The increase in the number of days for early voting to be offered, uh, in the primary election, which didn't exist, but, um, anticipating the amount, that amount will increase by about $4,000 to $5,000. Overall, it's about $15,000, uh, increase, uh, to, uh, to operate early voting. Those are just estimates. Um, I have about, about $18,000 there. Um, it'll probably end up being closer to an additional six or 7,000. Uh, if I run my cost, uh, very, uh, religiously, I'll put it that way, as you know I will. Um, all these fundings are not, I asked the Finance Director, would not require an appropriation to be advanced by the mayor, but would be advanced solely on COVID funding, which I believe is going to be, uh, available. And, uh, it, it, the, the way that would be done, uh, we're being told by department heads to enter it as a COVID expense, and that is, uh, prepared in a bill-like fashion and approved as a, uh, uh, as a requisition through the Finance Office.
Okay, I have another question. Uh, have you considered, uh, increasing the, uh, the fund for, uh, poll workers due to COVID and the position they might have working, uh, on the election day?
In- increasing their pay rate or increasing, uh, the, the overall budget? Um, I, I-
Pay rate due to COVID.
I, I always tell poll workers, no, uh, that's up to the council, but I mean, all kidding aside, um, I don't, I think we're the second highest paid in the state, not that that's any, uh, a, any great, uh, matter. Uh, I think poll workers are severely underpaid regardless. Uh, it averages out somewhere between 10 and $15 an hour, uh, for a 13-hour day. Uh, so that's about what they, they get now. Um, I'm always, I, I'm always willing to entertain it as an appropriation, but that would have to be, uh, a, a, a motion to the council. I'm glad to prepare it, uh, and to provide the information, and then, then an appropriation.
Yes. Uh, well, the thing is, is like, if, if we look at the situation, uh, the exposure that people are going to have there, they're going to think about taking the job. But if there is not incentive, if there's the incentive, incentive is the send, and knowing the fact that they can just go ahead and miss this election and go back again in a, in, in a year from now to work on their, like, if everything goes well, uh, they just can skip one election and, and not necessarily work. But if the pay increase, and then we have an incentive, uh, as of why people might take the job, uh, and also people might get exposed to COVID. I mean, it's nothing, nothing, uh, that I'm saying that probably people should take the job and get exposed, no, but at least-
Of course not.
And, and, and be able to, and be able to, uh, take advantage of a little bit of, uh, uh, of extra pay due to, due to COVID and be able to probably, um, use that, uh, COVID-19 funds related to that and go back to a regular rate once everything go back to normal.
Here, here's a, here's a suggestion and idea that would, uh, that you, you might, uh, you might enjoy. Um, I anticipate, uh, and everything is running through, running, uh, mail, uh, vote by mail through the central office. All those ballots are going to be obtained from vote by mail, which I expect in the final election will be about 16,000 votes, uh, and vote by absentee ballot and votes cast by early voting, which will be probably another 2,000 to 3,000 ballots, have to be run at the polls and placed into the poll locations. The, and, and one of the things that happened in, in 2016 was that the poll locations on average stayed open until about 10, 10:30, and in some cases, 11 o'clock. Um, and the poll workers immediately says, well, geez, how about some overtime? And I presented that as a motion to the council to provide them overtime pay, uh, at the rate that they were paid. Uh, that, that was not approved at that time, but that might be one inroad to doing that. If they're required to do extra work, maybe the council is considered to reward them with extra pay. But again, anything that the clerk does, uh, cannot be advanced, uh, without some supporting, as you know, some supporting, um, we'll say supplemental appropriation. It may be available through, uh, COVID-related, uh, as you're suggesting, and I'd like the opportunity certainly to discuss that, and I think it's a great idea. I really do, and that they, it's well deserved. Uh, it may be an incentive worth, with, uh, providing. I can tell you the council this, right now, um, and, and again, the mayor's been very helpful with advancing this, um, uh, we have approximately 100 poll workers ready to go. The minimum complement of poll workers for any election is about 177. Uh, I feel comfortable somewhere about 196, 192, and I feel very rich if I have 250 on board. And I expect to have 250 on board. I think we're going to have a good complement of poll workers. We have a very dedicated, uh, population, uh, of workers and, and who do poll work and assist us in that, and they're very good at it. Uh, some not so good, but most are very good at it. The biggest difficulty we're going to have is processing, uh, early voting and vote by mail ballots in central office. And again, a request was sent up and approved to add two additional temporary staff, and I'll get into that in more detail, uh, after this, uh, consideration, uh, to process the early voting and, and mail, vote by mail ballots that do arrive at City Hall. But again, I, I, I pursue it, uh, Council Rodriguez, I'd be glad to do that if given the opportunity.
I would like, uh, Council President to, uh, present a motion to, uh, send it to different stakeholders, including the city clerk, even though he's with us, but I mean, make it official, um, to, uh, look into the possibility of, uh, increasing the pay due to COVID-19 since, uh, since we know that we, we're probably going to be, uh, uh, with short, short amount of personnel due to the situation. Um, so, Council President, I would like to, um, please make that as a formal motion.
Second. Motion has been made and properly seconded by Council-
There is, there is a, there is a motion on the table. I think you want to do a subsidiary motion at this time, Council President? A motion to, and what is the motion?
We do have another motion on the floor. Why don't we vote on the motion first, and then we'll take, we'll, we'll handle Council Rodriguez's motion.
There are, no spike.
Yeah. Uh, Councilor, um, Mr. Clerk, the, the current motion on the floor, can you remind everyone?
Yes, the current motion is to, uh, approve the early voting, uh, schedule and, uh, early voting for the state primary at, um, at, in council chambers, uh, for that, uh, Saturday through Friday time period.
Yes, okay.
Motion to approve?
The time period was?
I'm sorry?
The time period, can you clarify that as well?
Yes, again, Saturday, August 22nd through Friday, August 28th.
Between what time to what time?
On Saturday, the 22nd, 8:30 to 2:30. Sunday, August 23rd, 9:30 to 3:30. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m.
So during the week, that is going to be, during the week, that is, is not going to be any day after 6?
Right. Every time you add an hour, it's $1,000.
Every time that we don't have people voting because they're working is worse than $1,000.
I don't expect a lot of people to vote in person, but if you want to add an hour to that, I'd suggest going, uh, again, Tuesday and Thursday, um, till 7 o'clock.
Yes, I mean, I think it is important to have the option.
Well, the, the real problem is having staff. I don't know if I can pull staff, I'll do the best I can, and that's going to be the real problem.
I'm, I'm looking around citizen towns around us, and they do have it at night, so we need to figure it out.
Right, and I, again, uh, if I don't have staff, that's not going to be able, possible. It's not so much the existing staff, the pronounced understaffing of the city clerk, of the city election division is rearing its head. I'm going to get two more people to help do that, and, 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 I'm working on that. But if you, if you allow it till 7 o'clock, if there are problems, I'll come back to the council.
Yes, please. We have the discussion once we, when we have-
Councilors, can I please get a motion to go past time?
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made, and it's been properly seconded. Mr. Clerk, Roco, please.
Motion to go past 10 o'clock. If I could have a second, please?
Second. Yeah, it's been seconded.
No, 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 if I could have one second.
Oh, if you, okay.
Thank you. Council, Council Reyes, noted. Council Levy.
Yes.
Council Selena Reyes.
Yes.
Council Abdu.
Yes.
Council Peano, noted. Council De La Cruz.
Yes.
Council Giovanni Rodriguez.
Yes.
Council Vice President La Plant.
Yes.
And Council Vasquez.
Yes.
I had two promotions this evening, by the way, that's, I'm feeling good.
So the, the, the schedule is two days passing, uh, until 7:00 p.m.?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, you realize my staff is going to kill me. You'll have one less person.
Yeah.
Okay, just one, thank you. Um, the motion for early voting now, uh, as to those dates and times and location. Uh, Council President, that is the motion. Do you wish to roll?
Okay, uh, Roco, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. Uh, Council Vice President La Plant. Council Vice President La Plant?
Yes.
Council Giovanni Rodriguez.
Yes.
Council De La Cruz.
Yes.
Council Peano, noted. Council Abdu.
Yes.
Council Selena Reyes. Council Levy.
Yes.
Council Estel Reyes, noted, and Council President.
Yes. The motion carries.
The last, and thank God, the last, and, and-
And before-
Item, I don't-
Council Rodriguez, Council Rodriguez has a motion.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Motion is to send correspondent to, uh, uh, to the different stakeholders, including the mayor's office, for the appropriation, the city clerk as an official, um, official request, to increase the paid, uh, the, the pay rates, uh, well, obviously, that's the council that have to do it, but I mean, we would like to have a feedback from each department to increase the paid, uh, due to COVID, uh, to the poll workers.
Second.
Motion has been made. Mr. Clerk, Roco, please.
Council Estel Reyes noted. Council Levy.
Yes.
Council Reyes, Selena Reyes, excuse me. Selena Reyes.
Yes.
Council Abdu.
Yes.
Council Peano, noted. Council De La Cruz.
Yes.
Council Giovanni Rodriguez.
Yes.
Council Vice President La Plant.
No.
And Council President Vasquez.
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed, two absent.
Council President? Uh, Council Plant. I just want to let you know that I know that, uh, Council Peano is, uh, trying to get on board and is missing many votes. He's having technical difficulties and is, um, trying desperately to get on, so if, if there's, if we have technical assistants on staff available to maybe reach out to him, that might be, be useful.
Okay, yeah, I just see him, uh, just now, he's trying to log in now.
Very good, okay.
I, I had similar problems, uh, the way to resolve it, if you're in touch with them, I just went through the phone and, and then it cleared up. Oh, there he is.
Motion to adjourn?
If I, if I could, Council President, if I could have one more item?
One more.
And then I'll, I'll stop bothering you guys.
No, no, not, it's not a bother, no, not at all.
Um, the last item is, uh, the temporary personnel for 89 days. I'm not sure, I don't think I even need a council vote, but I want to prize you of what the city, what we've been doing and what the mayor has authorized. Um, I have requests, two additional personnel, full-time personnel, uh, at poll worker rate pay, actually at $15 an hour to work eight hours a day, to be paid regularly for the next 89 days. And I choose 89 days in order to avoid any possibility of running into the 90-day, uh, ordinance that requires them to come on as permanent personnel. Uh, I don't think that would happen, but that would run from August 3rd through October 30th. Um, and, uh, I, we, I think we have some poll workers that would be willing and available to do that. Uh, I just want to let the council know that that's how we're trying to address the, the, uh, the number of, of mail-type ballots that we're going to receive from early voting to vote by mail to absentee balloting, all three of which will be in operation. What the state has done is they've run every type of voting primarily as vote by mail in some form or another, and, uh, and made it available. They're sending out postcards, some of you may have already received them, for the state primary, asking for your party affiliation to check which ballot you want, and then send it to your, uh, local clerk's office here, uh, to get a ballot. We haven't received the ballot yet. We, we were expecting the ballots in about 10 days. Um, they're going to conduct early voting and vote by mail in the same manner as early voting, uh, essentially just run it, people ask for a ballot, you mail them a ballot, and then they return it in a sealed sleeve. But in sum, that is the process. Uh, I don't know what else I can tell you. Uh, I, I will now yield the floor. Uh, I apologize for being lengthy, if possible. What I, what will happen, um, I will now beef up and resubmit a complete report to the Secretary of State containing your votes. Uh, they will probably come back at me and ask me to, um, ask for a confirmatory vote, and I'll place that as soon as I can to the council. Uh, if there are any other glitches that they want to address, I certainly will present it to the council. The last piece of this puzzle, um, is, um, is the Essex Towers. Um, I'm hoping that that can be resolved, uh, favorably for the voters in the manner that it's been proposed by the administration. It seems reasonable, and it seems fair. Um, uh, other than that, I, I'm finished, and I, again, apologize for taking so long.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Clerk. We greatly appreciate, you know, your efforts, uh-
Thank you, Council President. Can, uh, can you call for a re-table of the item?
Uh, is there a motion to re-table?
Motion to re-table?
Which has been made by Council De La Cruz, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Clerk, Roco, please.
Council Vice President La Plant.
Yes.
Council Rodriguez.
Yes.
Council De La Cruz.
Yes.
Council Peano.
Yes.
Council Abdu. Council Abdu. Council Ra, Selena Reyes.
Yes.
Council Anna Levy. Council Anna Levy. Council Levy, I think you're muted.
Hello, can you hear me now?
There you are. Yes.
Okay. So right now, I'm sorry because I was muted, I cannot hear nothing, and everything went off, so I'm voting for what right now?
A motion to table.
A motion to table, before table, I was asked, everything happened, I was trying to make a question, so I don't know if I still can do it, or I can do it after the table.
At this point, we wouldn't be able to engage for the discussion because we already...
It's not a discussion, it's not a discussion.
We have, we're voting now, Council Levy.
Okay.
Motion to table.
Yes. I can make the motion to table, yes.
Noted, Council Stella Reyes and Council President.
Yes, the motion carries. Counselor, Mr. Vice President and Chairman of Budget and Finance, when is your next meeting?
That would be determinant on when our next full city council meeting is.
So counselors, we, that's now, we normally meet on the first Tuesday in the month of August, because that's when National Night Out is held. Given the circumstances, that event is not going to take place, but I'm looking, you know, the new documents now, I think we could probably go ahead and meet on August the 18th. We do have two appointments, however.
The 30-day date on the appointment is August 14th, Council President, we received it on July 15th in this office. The other consideration, if the state rejects any of the poll locations or any of the election material, I'll certainly get on the horn to you and discuss other matters as to a special meeting.
Yeah, let's do, let's do August 11th as our meeting. So let's not meet on the 4th, and let's not do the 18th, we'll do the 11th, that sounds reasonable, counselors?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Council President, based on that information, I am going to schedule the Budget and Finance Committee for August the 5th, 7 o'clock.
Monday, the 3rd, 7:00 p.m.
Mr. Chair from housing.
Colonel Business.
Mr. Chair from public safety.
Monday, the 10th, at 7:00 p.m., does that work for the public safety folks? Yes, and also, Mr. Charter Committee meeting, folks in the Charter Committee, does the, it seems like folks either like Mondays or Thursdays?
Thursdays, I won't be able to.
Okay, how about Wednesday, the 12th? Work for both of you, yes, okay, Wednesday, the 12th Charter Committee meeting?
It's just, what did you say on the safety?
The safety with Monday, the 10th.
Mr. Madam Vice Chair from the Ordinance Committee.
Monday, August 3rd at 6:00 p.m. Then we do 6:00 p.m. From 6:00 to 7:00, and then we have personnel from 7:00 to 8:00.
Members of the committee, does that work?
Personnel for August.
Sorry, Council Dela Cruz, you can repeat.
August 3rd at 6:00 p.m. Because we have personnel the same day, at 7:00.
Okay, so, Mr. Clerk, do you get all the dates?
Yes, I did, what was the date on the last one, I'm sorry, the Ordinance Committee?
It's on...
August 3rd.
At 6:00 p.m.
At 6:00 p.m., got it, got it.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion has been made and properly seconded, Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Council Stella Reyes noted, Council Levy.
Yes.
Council Selena Reyes.
Yes.
Council Abdou.
Yes.
Council Peano.
Yes.
Council Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Council Rodriguez.
Yes.
Council Vice President.
Yes.
And Council President.
Yes, the motion carries, have a good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone, thank you.
Happy Father, President.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, sir.